Hello, I'm here.
Give you a minute to sit down and get ready.
Ready.
Ready. Hold on. Don't! Is it on?
Yeah.
Oh, for crying in a bucket. Alright, okay, actifying board, December 8th, not the 18th. Oh, oh, you're right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I missed it.
Yeah, it's a new year, remember? It's a senior now.
Today is the 8th.
The agenda.
Actifying board.
Did I make the first agenda?
Yeah, I've got one.
That should save you.
Yeah, you're right, Jess. Anyway, here we are. And yes, cable people, this is the same show. Okay, take a minute to breathe in that.
If they're wearing it since the last meeting.
It works, it's all worn out like the collar now. But it's comfortable. And this way I know who I am when I look at it. Anybody want to make a motion?
I will accept a minute if it's good.
Second. Any changes or corrections? All's in favor, aye. All's opposed, nay. Okay, those are good. Mr. Neal, did you have something you wanted to present to the board? Or do you just want to see what was going on?
Is this could be a public hearing for the...
The public hearing is, next is the 15th.
Oh.
Tonight is just an informational meeting for us trying to get this thing hammered out.
Oh, okay, I'd like to be, want to go over the number of changes.
The 15th is when we're doing that. But you're welcome to stick around.
Oh, okay. Alright, that's what happens when you get home. You'll get there one day.
Oh, no, I'm there. I hate to say it, but I'm there. Alright. Tom is dying to run the discussion tonight. I don't know why.
It's the town actually. Well, just that I've met three times with Lee and Mr. Coleman down at Southern Regional, and I thought I could go through this carefully with you, but expeditiously, and we could go home by quarter of eight. Page one on the document from Lee. Everybody had a chance to look this thing over.
Page one, you mean his notes?
Yeah, yeah, we'll work from there.
Alright.
And we'll have Brenda's work from the 18th in front of us with the colored edition. Everybody understood what he meant by the first point they ever got in variance language? We didn't talk about this in length, but he just said, "This is what I thought ought to happen," and made sense to me. I think somebody mentioned it, but you opted not to do it.
Was he alluding to the paragraph D on a special exemption sheet?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Now, we do, there are other places in the ordinance where we do mention, you know, some things cannot be changed by variance, but, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem. He refers to four standards. Those are the, those are the standards you need to get a variance. You know, you have to meet four criteria.
It must be hard to...
Yeah.
Reason, cause of yourself.
Right.
Just kind of made sense that we'd avoid the legal hassle if we eliminate that. Is everybody okay with that?
Well, so far.
Okay. Item two, I asked him specifically to make sure that we were not going to run a foul of notification requirements, to please check that thoroughly for us, and his answer was, "Follow normal procedures as you would for any public notice." I'll let us believe to hear this.
Now, we're not putting anything more in the RP, is that it?
Correct.
We're dealing with land that's already been designated RP, and we may be picking up, we may be including more streams with a 75-foot buffer on either side.
Right, I'm assuming that's a separate article warrant or whatever, that's not all the same.
What is?
The stream issue and the resource protection, being that we're building the resource protection as one issue, adding more resource protection is another issue.
Well, yeah, but we're not really, we're not really adding more resource protection though, are we?
You can't do the buffer on a lot of water.
But that, but that's stream protection, that's not...
You can't pay...
Because, because it's 75 foot, and that's the same thing we use for the resource protection, that's why, you think?
Well, it's non-billable area.
Why you put a shed or something? I mean, it's still subject to the...
Not, not within the buffer.
Wouldn't it be still subject to the provisions as outlined within the special exception canon? I mean, if there are instances where an individual has to build within that stream buffer that meet, that comply with the notions of the planning board under review, the applicant could...
Well, what I'm thinking about though is the notification. I'm looking, I'm still here on number two, because if we're creating more RP...
It's not RP, it's a stream protection, it's in the shoreline zone, it's a stream protection buffer.
We're talking about structures in the resource protection district outside of the shoreline zone, that's the first sentence of the special exception, 4226. So, we're talking about resource protection district. Now, if, if we're adding more RP, just because we may be requiring more streams to be, have the 75-foot buffer, if that's turning them into RP, then we have to notify people legally, I believe.
If you look on the map, the shoreline district includes the 75-foot stream buffer.
We're not talking about shoreline district though.
You're defining, redefining, that's a different definition of stream up there.
That's true, but it's going to hold true if we accept this change.
If we accept this, but the special exception is dealing with RP that is not in shoreline zone.
Correct.
So, if we are going to protect more land in the RP district, then I think legally we have to notify people that we're doing this. At least the people affected, and that's going to be tough to narrow down, I think we're talking like a whole-town notification, I don't know. I think we might need the town lawyer on this.
Well, that's why I asked Lee to look at this, and his interpretation of state law was that it's subject to merely the public hearing requirements.
So, wait, all those properties that have blue lines in them, that now are not subject to a 75-foot buffer, that we're suddenly going to make subject to a 75-foot buffer, don't have to be notified that suddenly their property has different zoning?
Jess, I asked him this question specifically to, to answer the issues that you and Chip are raising, and we got back his answer, so all, all we could do at this point is look, if Ken has a copy of the state shoreline zoning orders, we could look in that.
Whether it meets the law or not, it's the right thing to do, I think, to notify the people. When we had everybody coming in before that realized their property is now in resource protection, I was at least able to say, "You got a letter in the mail, there were multiple public hearings, you didn't attend any of them because there was only one person in the audience at each, at each meeting," until it further went on. And that, that to me saved the town and made it look like it was totally transparent, that this was above the board, everybody was notified. We got a ton of calls from people that were in the middle of nowhere that it didn't affect because we did a whole-town wire appeal.
Right.
This is a lot less area, and I mean, you could actually narrow down everyone, but you wouldn't want to miss anybody either.
Yeah, right, because that would be the one person that would have an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're...
Well, I think we ought to, before you, the cock before the horse, maybe it would be odd to look at this Title 38 language and just make sure we're not getting overly...
Check page seven of your zoning book. The middle paragraph under 1.7 amendment. This one starts, "In any case, the planning board should hold a public hearing, yep, da, yep, da, yep, da, yep." And around the middle of that, "If the amendment constitutes a change in zoning district boundaries or other amendment which would permit commercial, industrial, retail uses where previously prohibited, or prohibits all such uses where previously permitted, notice of hearing shall be mailed to all owners of the property that is within or budding an area affected by a proposed amendment." So...
Or money, which does not...
Yeah, well, that means we have, because we're previously, "Or prohibits all such uses where previously permitted," now these people could...
Does that just refer to commercial, industrial, retail, or is that...
Well, that's what it says.
No, it's not, I think, "or," it says "or."
Or retail uses.
No, no, no. Or retail uses where previously prohibited, "or prohibits all such uses where previously permitted," "all such uses where previously permitted" means everything. And if we're going to do this, I'm not taking one lawyer's opinion, we're going to get the town lawyer in on this if we need to.
Right.
So, we've got something real that we have to hang our hat on. Be that as it may, we're running up against the clock now to try and, to send out notices to everybody that would be affected if we include first-order streams, which is what is, would be the rub with this.
If, if you reread that text that you've just read, I think we're in the clear.
I don't.
I don't.
Well, better to do it...
And?
Yeah.
Well, yeah. But it didn't even have to be quick though, because if we have to, if we have this ordinance done by the public hearing, we have to mail out before the public hearing to let people know, that'll never happen.
Well, this, this isn't, the public hearing that we're holding on the 15th can be won, so we don't know.
Right, but we have till the end of the month to have the ordinance done though.
And aren't we just, aren't we, the whole reason why this topic came up was because we were having trouble with our existing zoning.
Yes.
And so, by, I put a lot of thought to it, you know, I would love to protect every drop of water, but by making this change to the definition of streams within this ordinance, we're just asking to be back at the table in two years with all sorts of people complaining that they can't do this and that on their property.
Maybe. Well, may we...
Second shift, will you come back?
May we consult with the town lawyer on this notification issue then?
Well, we'll see how it goes today and night, we'll see where we fall, where we fall on what we want to include on this. It may be a moot point in an hour and a half, I don't know. Anyway, so, even if that falls through and we don't send the mailings, I mean, I think anyway that we should be at least informing people who have attempted to come before the board previously, turned down, and now perhaps can get something built, to give them a heads up as to what's going on. If everything's going to, if something's going to go to everybody, then that takes care of that. But if it doesn't, I mean, I think unless that's prohibitive, trying to figure out who they are, I think that they should at least be told that we're making a change and that maybe they can... Well, we're pretty safe legally with that, because just the notification of the public hearing, because we're not taking anything away from them. And if we, let's just say we decided not to change the definition of streams to include the first-order streams, if we decided not to do that, but we went ahead with these other changes that, you know, that we initially did, then we're fine, then we don't need to notify anybody because we're not taking anything away. What we're doing is we're granting opportunities to build where previously you might not be able to. If we decide to go with a stricter definition of streams and protect every last little blue line on there, now we are possibly taking away the use of some of the land, and that, and because it's RP, that's why we have to notify people about what we're going to do. So, if we don't change the stream definition, it's not a problem.
I get that. What I'm referring to...
I know what you're saying, but I want them to at least be aware that they were turned down once, but now maybe they could come before us and do something.
That news will travel pretty fast on its own.
Like, my, my thought is that Riverside Drive one that's down by the lumberyard, when we turned that back, and I don't know that they would be able to fit into this, but it seems like that perhaps there might be a way that...
Well, you guys may, people that came in, you might not have gotten a lot of information from them, so they're not going to know everybody who had a question, and there may be people who never even bothered to come in because their neighbor said, "Hey, we can't do it." So, what we might be able to do is put another notification out there saying that this proposed ordinance may make it, may make it easier, however we write it, in some cases to bill where previously you couldn't. So, anybody who was denied before in RP, come to this hearing. We can drum up more business for the hearing by letting people know that, hey, we're going to be changing things on this, and if it, if it affected you before, it may help you now. So, that would, that would be the easiest way to do it.
Why don't we just take Kenny's suggestion and, and parse out the stream definition change and go forward with the special exception work?
You're here.
And wait for a legal opinion from the town lawyer on the stream, but we'll make two separate audits, alright? As a course action.
That way we can get this one done, anyway, yeah. Sounds good?
Page two. With a 412, which is resource protection district at the top, no changes in 421.
Can I just, I can't get to that page, I saw lots of changes. Oh, oh, wait, we're starting with 421?
It's the whole resistance.
So, this is not like the updated version, this, this is not the 2012 version, so there's lots of errors in it.
Yeah, we're going to go through those. I tried to go through carefully and compare Lee's work with the language existent in zoning ordinance, and whether it's different, I will, we'll cover that. Just a note on the numeration there, 412, the heading for RP district, the 1 is omitted line through, can I see that? S is for 122 with a line through the 1, entitled definition. That language all was in, was similar to the existent language, turning over the page. Let's, let's number these pages.
Hold on, wait a minute, similar or exactly the same?
They need to be exactly the same, they're not. The numbers have, the way numbers have been written has been completely, completely changed.
I'm just on page two, Jess.
Yeah, no, that's, we're on page one.
I'm on the first paragraph.
We're looking at purpose.
Can we, as we go through this, let's just number the pages, the first, the cover sheet is page one, is that okay? Page two.
Alright, that's what we're looking at, we're looking at purpose, 4.2.1. We have to be consistent in the ordinance, the way we write numbers and neutrals and numbers.
Right.
And we previously have done, written out 75 feet, and then put the numeral 75 within parentheses, that's the same way this is going to be. Now, the only thing that he had to deal with to rewrite was the special exception sheet, that one page. I don't know that it's necessary to go through these because these aren't changing, and the copy that we have in our book right now is the copy that we're keeping. We're not going to use anything that he wrote before 4.2.2.6. I don't see any reason to.
Or after, except for the change in numbers.
Well, just, yeah, I'm just talking about, the only thing we have to really look at is the special exception thing. Everything previous in this article, we're not touching, and our copy in the book is the legal copy, his copy is the one that is a little bit different and it's not correct. And if he made changes, he can't without underlining them at least, which he didn't do.
Can we, just for ease of rendering Ken's work and getting this correctly to the...
No, you're not talking about our Ken, you're talking about...
No, I am.
Oh, you are.
So that we can have a copy that is for hearing, for the public hearing, can we just work off of Lee's work dated 12/29, and as changes come up, we will...
No, 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 no. The only thing we're going to look at for the public hearing is special exceptions on 4226, there's no reason to look at this other, the previous stuff.
It will just confuse people when they start...
Right, because we're not changing it, and it's a waste of paper.
We're good proofreaders.
Then moving to page...
The trophy bananas, it was like...
Page four would be the special exception, heading 4226. Alright, we have to insert our language, first of all, change exception spelling, and insert our language after single-family residential structure, insert the clause and any accessory structure in the resource protection district, comma, outside of the shoreline zoning, shoreline, and then just cross out zoning regulations. So, it should read, "The planning board may approve a permit for a single-family residential structure and any accessory structure in the resource protection district, comma, outside of the shoreline, provided that the applicant demonstrates that all of the following conditions are met."
Which is exactly what we have on the board sheet.
I'm just working from Lee's work, that's what we have to comply with in terms of...
Well, no, 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 let's comply with what we already have. I like the, I like the sheet that has the blue and the red writing on it so far, that's exactly what you just said.
A is okay. B is okay, except for the date there, should be 9/29/11.
Well, it should say the adoption of the resource protection district also.
Well, you mean in parentheses, Jessica, that could be...
Well, we didn't have it in parentheses before, I, maybe we don't need it, maybe we do, but it just...
You mean the date?
Clarifies, no.
Yeah, clarifies what the significance of the date was.
Yeah, it tells you what the date is referring to.
Right.
Doesn't hurt that, how would you...
Well, it was in the version that we all liked last week.
Again, if you look at the one that's got the red and the blue writing on it, it's all there. The date though, is that what we're looking at specifically, you want 9/29?
Well, that can be written out.
You want September 29th instead of September 11th?
Yeah, that's the adoption of the map.
Alright, so, we agree that September 29th, what?
That is the date, I mean, we don't see that.
It's when the map was officially accepted by the town clerk.
But I, I think that, wasn't that when the maps were struck, but when it was actually voted on was the 11th, there was some discrepancy.
Right, town meeting was probably the 11th, but then the town clerk approved it on 29th.
That's, I think that's how we came up with that date, the 11th, because I think that's when the actual vote, we can check with...
Yeah.
So, it should be the 11th then?
We can, but we can bear it.
But we'll write it, it could be written out, September...
So, the adoption of the resource protection district happens not at the vote, it happens when the clerk...
Signed it.
Alright.
So, which do you want?
And, and the clerk signed off when, 29th?
Yes.
December on that one. I think it's the date of the vote, if it comes legitimate on the date of the vote.
Well...
We can look at that, just to check.
We can find out from Jennifer maybe on that.
Yeah.
So, let's find out for sure what we want there, is it the 29th, or the 11th, or December 13th, I don't know. Alright, but we're on board with that. C.
Light C is identical, stays the same.
Well, it should not be just turned into one sentence.
That's right.
It could be possibly just turned into one sentence.
Can't have one without a two.
Right.
Well, you don't need a one without a two. "All proposed building, sewage, disposal systems, and other improvements are located on natural ground slopes of less than 20 percent."
And strike the N.
Which, you know, because that, that N goes... Yeah, because it's all, and the N...
The N goes to two, which you struck, so you need to strike the N.
So, one says, "All proposed building, sewage, disposal systems, and other improvements are located on natural ground slopes of less than 20 percent."
We're still striking two on the blue copy?
Yeah.
Yeah. D, I thought we were going to plug in the total ground floor area within the RP.
That's right, that's what I had written down too.
Yeah, me too. And not only that, but even in the... Even in, what was I thinking? Oh, in the minutes tonight. We actually specified what you should say.
Right.
Right.
But this was, this was before, I haven't, I haven't made, I haven't made the proposal since last week's minutes.
No, we know, we know, you weren't supposed to, all we, that's what we're doing tonight.
What's the consensus on the last sentence there?
So, the total ground floor area, of all principal and except, well, does that mean that if, if a structure is 2,000 square feet, 1,500 of that 2,000 can be in the resource protection buffer?
Yeah, they could have 500 on the other side of the line. If they were right on the line, you go one of these walls, I don't like that.
That's proposed.
Because if it's existing, they don't get anything else.
Yeah.
If it's, you know, proposed structure, or if, if they proposed a 1,500 square foot, then in a, then 500 was not in the buffer, that would allow an additional 500 for another structure.
But, okay.
What, if we have to put that structure separately?
Well, no, I, I'm just confused because since we're giving people to build inside the, so you can put half a house in...
Well, if they have other billable, the whole lot might not be in the...
So, if they've already got 2,000 feet or something... So if, if they've already got two thousand feet or something, somewhere on the property, they can put an extension on the same building that... I, I, I just don't know how it works. You're saying that they can have...
A mansion.
Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to find it. Because I remember last time Ken had all the, you know, he had all the pictures of the different lots. And a lot of them, the line was fairly close to their buildings and, you know, maybe close to the road. But it's like, kind of, a lot of them were situated right where the buildings are gonna be. So if the building was partially in the resource protection...
So, but they just, no matter what they've already got on the property, they get to put fifteen hundred in?
No, if they already have fifteen hundred in resource protection and they can build outside of it, then they have to do that. If they already have fifteen hundred in resource protection, they want to expand, then they'd have to come, come to us and go through this verbiage.
See, that's why I thought we, we were going to include within the RP in this, in, in D, right after the total ground floor area. But...
To clarify, yeah.
He put it here at the end. It probably doesn't make that much difference, but the total ground floor area, let's just say, within the resource protection of all, of all principal and accessory structures is limited to a maximum of fifteen hundred square feet. Now, and forget that last thing, I don't care about that. Now, my thinking was that they can only have fifteen hundred square feet total within the RP. If they already have fourteen hundred feet of their home in the RP, they can only get a hundred more feet. All right. So we're, if we include within the RP in this sentence, if we don't include within the RP, then there's no limit on what they can do.
But they're coming to us and saying they need to build in the RP.
They, well...
That's why they're coming.
Yes, not necessarily everything, but they need some of the RP.
For the second clarity, just to put it, to put the clause in, the total ground floor area comma within the RP is, is, I think, a good thing to do.
Well, what if they have like a five thousand square foot house outside of our, because when it crossed out undeveloped, then, when we cross it off undeveloped, um, they could already have a developed property. I suppose then that there would be other land outside of the RP that they could still potentially build in.
Well, that's what we always try and do. It's like, it's like the best possible location. You try and get it back as far as you can without making a bigger mess, like cutting in a hill and creating all kinds of erosion or whatnot. But, and the same with this, I would think. You try and get as much of the new structure, whatever it's gonna be, outside of the RP and as minimal an intrusion on the RP as we can get. Because they have to come to us for a conditional use. And we can set conditions. They may want to build half their place in the RP. And we may say, no, it's not gonna happen. You can get maybe a third of it, put the rest somewhere else. Or you don't get to build as big as you want, which we've done in the past too. We've limited the size of some places on best possible locations because of setbacks or whatnot. So they have to come to us to approve whatever it is they want to do.
Quick question, are we, we are eliminating the last sentence, this limitation should not be altered by me. What do you want to know?
That people can't give up their rights, it's...
So stick, so strike that?
Always have the right to...
Right, so yeah. I mean, it, it can be pointless, but, you know, what the heck, let them try.
I, I didn't want to lose a point that Ken had raised once before about some language that we had in here previously about a accessory structure not to exceed six hundred square feet, i.e., given the option of a floating slab, but not in excess of six hundred square feet for the accessory structure.
I don't remember that ever being in here. From the very beginning.
We talked about it, did we kind of decide we'd roll it into the fifteen hundred?
I don't know if we ever had it written down, I remember talking about it.
I'll talk about it.
But I don't know that, is it, is it necessary?
I don't think so. Okay, the fifteen hundred's already limiting.
You've already got a thousand feet in resource protection, you can't put up something bigger than five hundred.
And I keep questioning the candidacy of things, but I don't know how to resolve it.
I think we pulled it out.
That's why we took it out.
Pulled it out, yeah, but it's because we get to put conditions on it. We get to say to them, no, you don't need a thirty-foot candidacy on that house. Because I can understand needing four feet on one side or eighteen inches on another, you know.
Just, yeah, just to get the runoff away and maybe have better drains or something.
Save the house. Make the house functional.
Did we come to a conclusion on the old East comment about a person having a house outside of the RP coming to us saying they want to put a storage area inside? No, because we do not have the right to do it. They come to us, we say, no, we don't think so, because you already have a house, this is, this is maybe too much. Can we say that and not allow them to put it in there? Or are we then forced to...
If, if they have, if they have recovered, actually, on the property, if they have room on the property for more structures...
They have lots of acreage.
And it's all in the RP, except for where the house is.
Right.
I, I think they should be able to build a shed.
They're case by case based.
Yeah, exactly.
And maybe there's somewhere we could have them shove a little bit of it in the, or outside of the RP.
I would hope the proposed plan, when it comes to you guys, isn't the best possible location.
Right.
Similar to if somebody's doing a best possible location and there's room to get it behind the hundred-foot zone, they don't come to you guys. So we talk realistically, if there's room to move it back, don't come here. But it is their right, so if they want to, and...
And then we can tell them no.
Okay.
So, I mean, that pretty much answers your question then, right?
I think so, but just, I was kind of just thinking it could...
Could what?
Potentially open up for a lively RP.
Want to divide their...
Again, these are, these are still, they're all gonna end up being conditionally used quasi-best possible location. And...
I mean, we, we still call it RP, but it's RP out of the shoreline zone. It's only locally regulated RP. It's not acknowledged by the state that is actually resource protection. And the state is allowing this actually in their districts, but we're not. And the board's taken the avenue that it's only outside of the shoreline zone. If it's inside of the shoreline zone, then thirty percent expansions are allowed.
Right.
You've gotta admit, I hope, that the amount of, the density around our existing shoreline zone is such that with constant vigilance, we have to, and monies, we have to apply to maintaining the quality of those waters. So to say that, to undercut the importance of, of maintaining buffers outside of the shoreline zone, that's why I was trying to seek the equity of, of taking a little bit of additional safeguard for first order streams and giving a little bit of leeway for permitted uses, for conditional uses as a trade-off. But we'll see how that works out. I just think we have to keep our eye on the ball in terms of what we're, what we're here to protect.
I, I think just like Jess said earlier, I mean, it'd be great to protect every little bit of it, but at the state level, they're not concerned about it.
That, that doesn't carry a lot of...
It does somewhat, it means fairly aggressive in locally protecting it with their biologists and research and the teams that they have looking at it.
Well, you know what's happened at the state level in terms of funding of, there's no more state planning office, check. The Department of Conservation and Agriculture and Forestry have been agglomerated into one bureaucracy, which probably, I'd be curious what the House' feedback on that would be, since that change has been made. To hold up the state's record of environmental protection as, as a gold standard, I wouldn't agree with that. That's okay, that's a work in progress. This is this. E?
Well, all right, so what's D could end up being then? Where do I want it?
I would agree that with your sense that, that it's clarified with the clause, "The total ground floor area comma within the resource protection district of all principal and accessory structures." Limited resource protection buffer, excuse me.
Shouldn't it within the RP be after structures?
We put originally, I have a design area coming after the area.
Yeah, so did I.
And I drew it all around, but it goes back to after area. Didn't fit.
Yeah, the total...
But whatever sounds best.
After area, total ground floor area within resource protection area, protection zone of all, all the principal accessory structures is limited to a maximum of fifteen hundred square feet.
Period done, right?
Right.
Okay, that's what we're going with?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Same point is raised a little bit in E, check, for clarification. I have the note of, this should read as, Brenda has got it, "All structures in the resource protection buffer outside of the shoreline zone," was an insertion there, recommended.
I was making that for the, uh, D also, but it, it's up at the heading of the special exception.
That's what this whole thing's about. This is all about RP that's outside of, and we talked about this last time. And I thought that's why we didn't add it in there, because it's already...
In the heading.
This whole thing is about that.
It's just clarity, whether, whether you...
It's, it's, it's muddying the waters, because it's already clear, because we're not, we're talking about RP that's outside the shoreline zone.
It's the same sense of why you used it indeed, but that's okay.
Are we keeping the word tributary or moving it? Because of tributary, now, I don't want to add to the complication, but really, if we use the word tributary, we only have to change the definition, we don't have to change the map. We wouldn't be changing our definition, we'd be adding a new definition, but I prefer not to. I prefer not to. I prefer to just, for now, stay safe and use our definition of streams.
So you would not change the rest of this then?
I would, I would eliminate the word tributary, although I can hear arguments both ways.
Well...
And there were arguments both ways last time. It's different than just calling it first level stream.
Tributary stream is smaller than a first order stream, by far.
Right. But it's, it's not, but we can just add a definition, we don't have to change the map to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Jess, what is your recommendation?
I would recommend removing the word tributary.
Oh, fine, yeah.
I put a lot of thought to it.
Yeah.
So you would just go with stream?
But using our definition of...
Existing definition?
Our existing definition, which is the second tier stream, second...
Fine.
Just for now.
It's, it's not in the...
It's not in the new one, because Tom, there were changes made, it's in the one that was from December eighteenth. Since that seems to be the moral...
So we're, we'd be using stream, a fleet, a free-flowing body of water from the outlet of a great pond or the confluence of two perennial streams as depicted by a blue line on the most recent edition of the USGS survey seven-point-five-minute series topographic map, to the point where the body of water becomes a river or flows to another water body or wetland. That's the one you want to go with for stream? If we just call this a stream. And those are the ones we've already protected. We good with that?
Yeah, so that's...
So tributary gets next.
Good.
All right.
Now, the status of the stream proposal to accept first order streams, can we run that by the, the notification issued by the town lawyer? With Ken's help? Or however that's done, maybe with heads up?
I think the cost to the lawyer's gonna outweigh the cost of the stamps.
Really?
Not the time, I mean, it's gonna take some time to figure out everybody affected in that, but, um... I, I just go back to E again for a second, do we even need E?
What's...
Well, we, we might not need half of E.
I don't know if we need any of them.
Really, you don't think we need the determining the greatest practical extent part?
No, it's you guys making up any condition you want.
That's what we do.
Yeah, but I...
Okay, actually, I, I saw a point, last time you said it last week.
Yeah, I mean, it's there because it's state language. And again, they're looking at the state resource protection, the ten acres and greater. So it's local resource we're doing, we can do whatever we want.
Yeah, well, if we look at the first sentence then, up in the beginning, special exceptions, "The planning board may approve a permit." Now, do we want to say a conditional use permit?
We should, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got that tone.
Because if we're gonna be laying conditions on this, then I think we have to call it a conditional use permit because I don't know that we ever, what other permits do we issue though?
It was special exception permits in here somewhere.
Oh, that, well, I think we should call it conditional use.
Are the ones for non-conforming properties conditional use? The ones where we do the best, where we do the greatest practical extent?
Yeah. A conditional use, you, in the past, we've done them for like gravel pits...
Or home occupation.
Or a home occupation, or stuff like that. Where we can put conditions on stuffs all in here.
I would suggest, in deference to the applicant, that we retain that language in the second sentence, changing the word shall to may, thereby giving the applicant the, the sense of the scope of, of what the board might be considering in terms of approving of the application.
Are we gonna eliminate any mention of streams or...
Oh, you're looking at E again?
Yeah.
Just the form of whether to draw...
Where are you looking, Bob?
I was looking at E.
Were you looking, were you looking at my line too?
I mean, why not explain to the applicant what he's gonna be confronting when he comes into...
It's all rated here, so you're gonna have to change C in resource protection.
We may have to have a new resource protection in the shoreline or resource protection outside of the shoreline.
Oh, you mean new category?
New category.
Ooh, hey, that might be easier then. But we'd still have to exonerate stuff that's already there though.
Wait, is that if we keep it or if we get rid of it? The, the language?
If we make these changes, then we're gonna have to change the chart too. Because on the chart, there's some areas where you can't do something that now we're gonna allow with a conditional use. So the very first sentence under special exceptions, four two two six, "The planning board may approve a conditional use permit."
Okay.
All right, so we change right here, C.
Yeah, wherever you find those.
We'll have to make a resource protection in the shoreline or resource protection outside of the shoreline.
All right, that's easier. Okay, now, back to E.
My suggestion would be to, again, for the sake of clarity, to retain the clause outside of the shoreline zone and also to retain the second sentence, beginning with "indetermining the greatest practical extent." However, again, to inform the applicant, change the word to give the board full reign to, of items to consider. Change the word shall to may.
Shall means that we will do it.
You have to.
May means we might.
Yeah.
Why are we throwing a might out there?
May is more inclusive of the items that could be considered. It does not close down, it does not restrict you to the sense that you, that you can only consider these.
It opens up an opportunity to argue with Ken and us.
Shall means we consider all these things.
Right, but does it preclude...
May means we might consider them.
Does it preclude considering something else if you use shall?
If we consider something else, we better tell them what it's gonna be. We can't pull something out of our hat after they come in and say, you know, we meet this and this. Oh, well, we didn't write it in the ordinance, but we thought you understood that we could pick anything we want. And we're gonna pick this. I, I think if we're gonna use criteria, we ought to list, we've listed some. What other ones would we use that aren't listed?
Let's just look at the layers.
Or eliminate the just...
No, if they have to build there, you're gonna have to blast into the ledge and stuff. That's, I'd erase it all and that gives you guys anything you want to do.
Erase which part?
If you don't, if you take it out.
All of E.
If you take it out, then you can put what conditions you want.
Yeah, and this is the same verbiage in the best practical location, I would imagine.
Well, there are guidelines listed under conditional use permit and under best possible extent for non-conforming property. But it's true that...
Yeah, if you look at page eighty-five in our ordinance, just as a, as a, an example of how this might be framed, under six six three eight, conditions attached to... be framed, under 6638, "Conditions attached to conditional uses." "Upon consideration of the factors listed above, the planning board may attach such conditions in addition to those provided in this ordinance that it finds necessary to further the purpose of this ordinance." That's a pretty open-ended...
Yeah, but if we say nothing, then we're implying the same thing, aren't we? Or are we?
Well, it does, it does list some things in there. But it says, "In addition to the ones we list, there may be other ones too."
Well, I would, I would suggest that we give the board...
It's already in the conditional use permit processes, that's already there.
Well, then, then...
So your vote for getting rid of the E altogether? Anybody else?
I'm very excited.
If you have, if the things are mentioned in two different places... Because we're talking about a conditional... Not 100% in...
Yeah, yeah.
Then that's when you get all kinds of... That's what you get. And we're talking about a conditional use permit now, so it's gonna bring them right to this section anyway. So get rid of E?
One, one last point on E, the, the, there is, there is the criterion of, "To the greatest practical extent but not less than 75 feet horizontal distance," is that covered anywhere else? I don't believe that.
That's covered because if they've got a second level stream on their property, there's already a 75-foot buffer.
If it's the stream, but a lot of these resource protections are forested wetlands, you can't even tell really they're wetlands, it's just a buffer around it, but you're not gonna have a functionally dependent water use, that's a marina, I mean, that's all gonna be on the, the lakes and things like that, so I don't foresee it, I still see just ponds and sheds trying to be utilized on the property that wasn't resource protection two years ago.
Okay.
So do we, do we need the protection of the language, "But not less than 75 feet horizontal distance?"
The, the definition of the shoreline district, this is outside the shoreline district we're talking about.
I left in that where the 75 feet came from.
You know, it comes from the definition of stream.
In the shoreline.
I thought that was the definition of stream for every possible...
Uh, I, I don't, it was three minutes ago, so I don't remember if I mentioned stream when I read it.
I think there's only one mention of stream in the...
Uh-oh. Uh, stream, S, 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 uh, blah, blah, blah. No, 7.5-minute map, I don't have any 75-foot setback, although I know we touched on that...
Well, all second order streams have a, which is the one seen defined have that 75-foot setback because they're in the shoreline.
Right.
This, this here, this here grants a 75-foot buffer for a stream smaller than a, than a second order stream, which in a lot of times is valuable, because those streams there on the map that are first order streams, they flow around, they're fairly big water bodies, you wouldn't want to put your house right next to it anyways.
But under conditional use, you guys could be 100, 150, 200, whatever.
The first sentence...
Depends on what they're all, basically, yeah.
Currently, in the, in the ordinance, it says, "Setback from normal high water line or upland edge 100 feet from a great pond, 75 feet from a river, stream, wetland or tributary stream." Right, and in this article, 4.2, page 30...
What tributary stream it says?
Page 33.
Okay.
Well, I'm looking at page 30 of this very ordinance, 4.2, that we're amending, and the first sentence, "Under purposes, RP district shall include the following areas exclusively of the area within 75-foot feet horizontal distance of the normal high water line of the stream."
Since resource protection, he was in shoreline zone.
Yeah, but this whole thing is, dealing with...
Outside.
Outside.
That's making it more confusing than it is.
I don't know, I think Tom has a point, I think we should have 75-foot setback somewhere in here. No?
Why don't you just retain the first sentence of E? I agree with Kenny that, and Arthur, that in order to give the board the scope of review that might be warranted by some of these damn things, we don't want to limit ourselves by the second sentence then, but I think maybe the first sentence in E is helpful.
Functionally water-dependent structures?
No, we're...
Inland?
We, we should cross that out. All structures in the RP...
They take out in the RP too, right?
I, I would suggest...
He wants that, Eddie wants outside the shoreline.
Well, I think that would be a little less confusing if we took out the RP also, isn't it?
Yeah, because you can, obviously you can go back up to the top of the page and reorient yourself, but if you have it right within the text that is, is at hand, it's a little more, it makes a little more sense, is my, my take on it. I would suggest it would read, "All structures in the resource protection district," I know it's a, it's a repetition, "outside of the shoreline," let me finish, please, "all structures in the resource protection district outside of the shoreline zone." A setback from the normal high water line to the, to the clause horizontal distance, period, and then that would be, that would be E then.
Well, then why wouldn't you say for C, "All proposed structures in the resource protection outside of the shoreline"? Why wouldn't you say for B, "Almost the..."
Well, you're going back up to B, the lot of which is the structures proposed?
Yeah, "In the resource protection outside of the shoreline."
Well, he's just bracketing the whole change, but we've got in the first paragraph, we've put the blind...
But I'm saying this is E, it like follows in under the head, follows...
Yeah, I mean, when it's that close to the heading, you don't need to repeat it, I'm just making it case, Yoli, that repetition is sometimes helpful for clarity.
But if they're in the RP, but we're not gonna let them put, put anything within 75 feet of wetland, what does that give them?
Some of the buffers go to 250, some of them start at 25 feet.
Okay, so it depends on...
50 feet.
If they're nine acres or two acres, okay?
We could, we could change that 75 to 50, for fairness if you want.
I'm stifled getting rid of E altogether, I don't see it beneficial for you.
Well, let's make a...
It creates limitation that we can't put conditions on.
Let's just make a, go around the table then, so what, what is the sense of retaining first sentence in E? All, all those in favor? Say aye. Okay, what's, what's the notion then?
Do we want to just get rid of E?
It seems the easiest, I think, and all the streams are protected in the shoreline zone.
Right, but...
So this would just be the edge of a forested wetland or something like that.
Which is outside the shoreline zone.
Which is outside of the shoreline zone.
That's all we're dealing with.
Correct.
Well, no, when you say, it's a little misconstruing the case when you say, "All the streams are protected..."
In the shoreline zone.
Yeah, but not outside the shoreline.
Correct.
Which is what we're dealing with here.
But the second level of streams are protected at 75 feet.
They'd be in shoreline zone.
They've got purple lines on, exactly.
Yeah, but that's not the case either, because under this proviso here, all the language preceding E allows intrusion upon that 75-foot buffer, does it not?
That's why I don't understand how you can have a buffer if you're allowing an intrusion on the resource...
It's just a smaller buffer than they would have.
Well, it still means the people with the smallest acreage that are gonna have the most trouble fitting buildings onto their property are gonna have least access, right?
Correct. And if there's one to build it away from the stream, that's gonna be the proposal they bring to you, is in the best practical location for the site, it's gonna be far enough away from it.
But E, the intent of E, when it was drawn up at the state level, if I might contribute it, was to set a minimal bar of protection.
But that's for 10 acres or more.
Right, I'm with you, I'm just saying.
So if you have a two-acre lot that you can't put a shed on or even build a house on, which has become a problem, which is the problem we're trying to solve, and then you're creating a buffer within the buffer, I, I just, I don't know if it's gonna solve, you know, I mean, I don't know enough of the properties well enough to be able to visualize what putting 75 feet on either side does, it's 150 plus the width of the stream, feet on a property that's already only, it's already almost all wetland. I mean, to be able to understand it, I just like can't visualize it. I'm tending towards Ken's recommendation on that one.
Because you guys are unlimited by the conditions you can put on them.
So we can tell them 100 feet if they've got 100 feet, but we can also tell them 80 feet or 60 feet if they've got only 60 feet.
Or you can tell them, "They have nothing and no, you don't get anything."
It's not an exception if, if your buffer's 75 feet.
Exactly, I guess that's the logic I'm trying to get at.
Well, there you go.
Thank you. My brain is cracked.
Well, depends on the site of what need it is, though.
Right, but this would punish the small property owners, which are the very ones who are complaining because they can't...
You're not looking to punish anyone or...
Under the resource protection, the purpose is, is a 75-foot buffer.
Right.
Right in the first, that's in the first, so if you still have a 75-foot buffer, then there's no exception.
What about shrinking the...
That's in the shoreline zone.
That's in the shoreline zone.
This is resource protection.
Correct. Currently, if you look on your front of your zoning book on map 2 of 2, you'll see that the buffer starts at two acres wetlands with a buffer distance of 50 feet. What if we were to amend that and have the bar set so that you could not diminish the buffer below 50 feet? In other words, changing 75 feet in E to 50, so it would be more in conformity toward the intent of the town had when they accepted map 2 of 2.
I guess, I'm not...
Still 100 feet plus the width of the stream.
I'm not entirely sure why you'd have a larger buffer for a larger body of water, a larger wetland.
Well, a smaller wetland is more fragile, it can more easily ruin the smaller one.
Is that why you're...
It's more fragile if you're just as big a buffer for a...
Seems like if we're maintaining a buffer around a wetland, you know, it's small, it's just as much risk as it is large.
Well, service.
That's outside this discussion, I, I just...
No, it's not.
Well, you mean...
Sorry, I don't know if that would be a lock, but it's over.
75, the purpose under resource protection originally is 75, within 75 feet, the buffer established under, this is on page 30, under purpose for the resource protection, so if you then have a 75-foot buffer in there, there's just no exception.
Resource protection in the shoreline zone.
Can I interrupt? Who owns the sign on?
I turned it off.
My daughter just backed into it.
Yeah, bummer. Take a break, five minutes, smoke my finger. So we're talking about resource protection.
So this is resource protection outside of the shoreline zone.
Really?
Really, again, you guys have the ability to put any conditions you want on it, get it away from the river, is the best practical...
I was wondering why the alarm was going off? Well...
Is that five-minute break anyways, right?
Well, we can certainly call it over, I don't know, I think we are too...
If you decide anything low and outside, I, I'm going to go, Ken.
We're just gonna think it over.
She gives Ken a proxy.
I go from a half a buck just like low on.
Nice. That'll be like... The original one had only one picture on it, showing the judge.
Because really, you have unlimited conditions, you do whatever you want.
Picture.
Whatever the law requires.
Yeah, you gotta take a picture of it.
Well, we might look at trying to set it 75 feet away from the stream.
Oh, I think you're gonna try to...
They said it was mile away from...
Well, yeah, but if, if, if their plan is to encroach, see, I guess I was under, I was thinking that they wouldn't build within the 75 foot. But if that's the case, then they're outside of the RP, right?
If it's a stream like this...
It's just a stream flowing into a bigger one, I mean, right by the buffer.
Yeah, all right. So then it wouldn't necessarily have...
All probable, you know, probably could break it.
I don't know, I don't know that I saw the need for allowing people to build within a 75-foot.
No, I don't see, I mean, I don't think you guys would allow them to gain there, unless their lock was only 75 feet, I mean, it would have to be...
I don't know if everyone would do that, I, I think that's...
No, you'd say, no, you have no place to build, and they'd have to go get a new variance.
Yeah.
Or you're gonna make the structure taller to go there.
Well, yeah, but I, I just, I didn't think we were gonna allow any building within 75 foot, I thought that was more or less sacrosanct from the state on down. I mean, when we're doing timber harvesting, they can't go within 75 foot.
Why do we continually open ourselves up to this job, or why are we so afraid to settle, as in this case here?
That's why I'm saying, what's wrong with the 75 feet?
I'm with you. I just think, to Yoli's point, I think we might have a court set up here sometime when this hits the fan, and I, I'd love to give him a hand around, Kenny, if there's some way to do it, the number of lots that actually might be impacted by 4226B, i.e. how many lots were established?
About two percent of you guys did, okay. Yeah, we did have two. Plus I got two big books of state specs.
There'd be that number impacted by this?
That was changed, yes.
That was if we were gonna include every last little blue line, right?
If it fell on the law at all.
Yeah, which we're not dealing with right now.
No, I just, I just mean the ones that are all the little lines, we're just...
The ones that were created since that date.
When you change it from 10, because it's...
I'm gonna...
We counted those off.
Oh.
At the outside of the shoreline, so that's all right. I get one of those packets, I get next to one of those, Scott.
24.
I wanna say 100.
Oh, well, I mean, look at the map, there's even, even though it's not a, a real good description, there's a ton of little boxes.
Yes, there are.
It's actually map 2 of 2, we should be looking at, which is the one that has the...
Over here.
Yeah.
And what's it again?
2 of the buffers.
2 of 2 shows the buffers, yeah.
And that's what we actually looked at, was anything less than the 250?
We did.
To, to get a good idea of it.
And it was about 120?
I can't, I can't remember, but there was, yes.
And those were developed and undeveloped?
I didn't look at that.
Yeah.
I just looked at any problems.
Lots existed.
Lots.
Lots that existed, yes.
Tom brought a 745, I remember that.
I did, but I wasn't, I didn't take a caution to look at.
I got the caution for...
I tried, I didn't have time to eat.
Trying to get out of here before that happened, but that's...
If we wanna go with 75, if we wanna include 75-foot setbacks, where are we gonna put it if we don't include some of E? Find a better spot to put the 75-foot, I think we ought to have that anywhere somewhere that you can't build within, is that the consensus? We're not allowing people to build within 75-foot of a stream?
And outside of 75 feet, you know, like a C too.
You gotta sort out that line, that's the question.
And, well, yeah, so we can sort it out there.
Any rate, if it's 75, emerge in with C or D.
What, what would it be, proposed wording? Brendan?
What if we made it number two of C, where you're making, you're making two conditions instead of one?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Number two would be, and it does not fall within 75 feet.
Yeah?
Number two, we have, "All structures are setback from the normal high water line or water body." Number two, we have all structures are set back from the Mohawk waterline of a water body.
Stream omitting tributary there, right, to Justice's point?
Yeah. I think it's interesting we already have tributary in the ordinance, we already got a definition for it.
Well, that's because the state uses it. I saw it somewhere in today's...
It's not as problematic as we thought because we already have it all written out in the ordinance.
I like Brenda's idea. Put it as C2.
Yeah, I like that, too.
So keep one.
We have to compare the verbs if those before the 75 feet, because there's a little back and forth. That's exactly what we want to be, 75 feet back from.
And no proposed structures will be within the 75-foot setback of the blah, blah, blah.
Upland edge of wetland.
Stream or of a, upland edge of a wetland.
Or located on natural ground slopes no closer than...
Well, but then we're including, if we're going to call slopes, we should throw the 20%.
So make it a two?
Yeah, make it a two, please, Brenda.
Okay, it will say, and so it will say and.
Well, you don't want to start a sentence with an and.
No, it says and, and, and there.
You can leave the blue and in there.
When you already crossed that?
Or what if you said nor?
Oh, so that's just one sentence again.
What if you said nor located, no, it'd be number two.
It's just combined together. Oh, I see.
Instead of and, what if you would have to say nor, nor located within a stream?
Nor located within 75 foot back, 75 feet of a stream or upland edge of a wetland.
75 feet.
How's that?
Of a stream or upland.
Edge of a wetland, whatever.
Edge of a wetland, okay. So it will say located on natural ground slopes of less than 20%, nor located within 75 feet of a stream or upland edge of a wetland.
I kind of want to put that horizontal distance in with the 75 feet.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Less than 75...
So, and I don't know, but the nor part of the sentence.
The nor doesn't make...
No? You can't be and.
No, make it a number two.
Okay.
I think it's...
Well, we did make it a number two, but we were going to include that and.
You need a conjunction.
Because you have to meet all these criteria, right?
Meaning both, not one or the other.
Right.
Okay.
But you already set up C with a, with a colon.
Right, right, so leave the, leave the and...
I crossed it out a long time ago.
Leave the and, and how would it read?
It can't be and.
Look at the time.
No, it doesn't, it can't be right.
You've got to have a conjunction.
I was talking to you before, you're right, but it's, if you're going to combine them together, it's going to have to have a... And located outside of 70 feet, and located outside of 75 feet horizontal distance of a stream or upland edge of a wetland.
75 feet horizontal.
And located outside of the 75-foot horizontal...
You can't say, okay, and located outside, okay. You can't do that.
And located...
Right hook.
Outside of the 75-foot horizontal distance from a stream or upland edge of a wetland.
Okay, so...
Something like that, maybe.
Is that a two or a seven?
Horizontal.
Make it a two, I don't care.
It's going to be two.
Brenda, can you read it back to us?
I'm trying. Horizontal distance.
Where's your copy?
75-foot horizontal distance.
A...
Of a stream.
Or upland, upland edge of a, of a wetland.
You all right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Did it get the insurance?
Uh, probably not for me. She cracked her.
We determined if we're out of here at 745, like Tom promised, that would be the best.
Yes, I'll tell Tom, yeah. Yeah? I'll look for that.
But Ken would be on the E, too.
I doubt, doubt I would actually, from the way it looks now, I doubt I would even notice it if the alarm had been pulled off. But she, she got a crack on her bumper. She's got very plastic on her.
Ooh, that's going to cost money. It's not like the old days of just stealing, you know?
I know. They may have replaced the whole thing and then have to go to paint, but...
Okay, so what we've done is we've eliminated E, but we wanted to keep the 75-foot setback because our consensus has become we don't want anyone to build within 75 feet of a stream or the upland edge of a woodland, all right? Because we have been able to in the past, and I don't think that's what we've wanted to do with this. There's other areas that they can build and, you know, but within 75 feet of a, of a stream, no. So we're going to put that back as a two in C. And proposing, allegedly it's going to read, uh, one would, C1 would be located on natural ground slopes of less than 20%, and...
Located outside of a 75-foot horizontal distance of a stream or upland edge of a wetland.
Beautiful.
Can everyone stop with it?
Oh, that's, makes sense?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right?
Thank you, Brenda.
Well, it makes sense. Do you have any?
Yes, no, it does. I just, I'm kind of glad I was...
Well, it wasn't...
I just was, my whole brain was getting muddled in the logic.
I know. Well, we felt, though, that we had to throw the 75-foot setback in here somewhere because we didn't want people to build within it, all right?
So what we're going, what we're going for is this, right? And this, no, no.
So we're changing conditional use of the first section.
Yeah, we're putting that right after, they'll prove A1, this is proven.
We're going to verify D of one item B.
Of one that's legal.
We're going to make, state changes, C. We're going to add within the RP buffer where you said...
Where's that?
On D.
The total ground floor, oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And eliminate E.
It's a 37, oh, but that's going up, okay.
And we're also crossing out in D that said, unless that limitation shall not be opened by nerves.
All right.
Sound like a plan?
And then because the hearing is next Thursday, if I get this done tomorrow, email it to everyone and just make sure that it's exactly as intended to do.
Well, and you've got this in your computer, so...
Where are you going to buy next Wednesday?
Tom, maybe you could, there's a definition for forested wetland in here?
I don't think there is, but there's a, look under wetland freshwater, that's what it is.
So we have to change the chart, too, right?
And if you could put this on the computer and make copies to say...
I think you're right, there is, there is one for forested.
Upstairs, definitely.
The operative one is wetlands, and brackets freshwater.
Just to give them the chance to... Yeah, well, especially...
I can also put on there so they can...
I mean, yes, but this is, there's nothing to this.
Okay, so...
Well, you got the stuff you...
But we still have to keep, we still have to keep this as underlining.
Yes, right, 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 I got that.
So the underlining, this has to be kept...
All, yes, but all lined out.
Lined out, struck out.
Right.
So all of two gets struck, all of E gets struck. Limitations shall not be altered, variances get struck. Everything we added gets underlined.
Right.
Do we add the entire chart to this whole thing, including the new title, and then fill in the boxes?
I, I thought we could get away, didn't we in the past change this and just use...
We just, that section, I just made dot, dot, dot to show that there was something before and then dot, dot, dot.
If we're changing one, we can put it in and cross it out. If we're adding one, we can put it in the title.
The exact same way. But will it affect the entire chart?
It should affect 4.226 and to the end of that section.
So, but the chart part.
We're looking at pages of the 14.
Land use chart.
Page 13, check residential structures and uses. I think it would change single-family dwelling and it would change structures and uses accessory to permitted uses and conditional uses.
Oh, you know, we had marked this before, I had this marked before, too. I don't know if it was for this or something else.
Well, we were talking about resource protection. Those were the changes. But what we'll have to do is, like Ken said, add a new column.
Otherwise, they're going to use that single-family irregularity.
So over here, where resource protection, we'll have within the shoreline and then a column that will say resource protection outside of, and then everything will be not permitted except those conditional uses, those two that you just came up with.
So just single-family, not two-family?
It's a single-family.
It's a single-family in average.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, fine.
And accessory structures.
So just those two. And then everything else of those other two, except those two will be and for not permitted.
Yes.
In our category.
So then we'll only have to show that, that section as change.
Be a call, a new column, 13, or you're going to bump the numbers up?
I would bump them up.
Yeah, so we really have to bump them on this side, too.
Right.
Even though it's, it doesn't apply, we still got to...
We'll still show them, so we'll have to give them the whole chart.
So usually the chart isn't part of it, but versus the ordinance.
But the chart's going to be needed by us.
It is, it's in the ordinance, though, and so it has to be, I've got...
A lot of times it's treated as a no. Every place it says a no, that's not part of the ordinance. But as you go down through, we're going to want forest management, I would assume, as a permitted use. What? Gardening, you know, things that are permitted already in the resource protection.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, in our...
So it's not going to be straight no everywhere as except that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the only things that would impact would be those two criteria of single-family dwelling and...
Otherwise, keep it the same as what the resource protection is.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll, I'll just repeat the original resource protection and change those two categories...
Correct.
To conditional use.
And how are you going to do that? You're going to fold in, you're going to have a, and column nine, column D is RP. Would you do a 10 would be RP outside of the shoreline zone?
So shoreline would become 11, the lost big would become 12, and the aquifer would become 13. Does that make sense?
So we're thinking of only making row 13 under residential structures and uses. We're not going to bother with a row 13 for anybody else?
We'll have to have that down, too.
Right. So are we going to have to then include this whole thing at the here, in the ordinance?
Yeah.
Well, if you put an asterisk under, by resource protection, or a no, right under the, under zones nine, resource protection, and...
You could do it with an asterisk over there, you go to the next page and it says outside of the shoreline zone, see blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So why don't we just take, you know, where it says resource protection, bump it over to the left, put a little hatch line and, you know, the resource protection in the shoreline and then resource protection out of the shoreline, side by side, within that same box.
Split the box until...
And then bring it down. It's going to be everything a little smaller, but there's only going to be a couple of changes and then they can look and see what the differences are.
Perfect. I can do that.
So we'll only be splitting the box in a couple of areas and under the title.
Sure, whatever is easier to...
Yeah, versus having BP and, and, and...
Sure.
Again, just for residential structures now.
Correct.
Accessories.
Accessories.
Well, yeah, but I'm talking that area of the thing. We're not going to split the box over here on page 12.
Just on the, I would just on the heading.
Just on the heading.
Resource protection inside, outside.
Oh, okay.
Split the box on the heading.
But then we'll have, we won't split like the...
Because it's not the same.
Because that pertains to both.
Right, we still have to include this.
Right.
What people say, so we got to print up more papers. That's my point.
That's not too bad.
Well, all right.
I take a lawyer at my conference.
I know it's funny, but you're... Um, yeah, no, that's, yeah, I was hoping there was some way we could get away from that, but we really can't. All right. So, Tom?
What are we doing with the notification of the voters pertaining to stream definition, Jay? Are we abandoning that or are we going to just run off the flag with the lawyer? We had, we had a lawyer and just recently, there was a, um, a decision you guys had to get a lawyer's opinion on. It's turned around in a week or two. What was that?
The schoolhouse.
What was it?
The schoolhouse.
Oh.
Yeah.
What did that cost?
Hundred bucks.
So I, I don't know, was the board in favor of expanding more resource protection and expanding the stream protection area?
That's the thing. If, if we want to, then yes, we need the opinion. If we're not going to change it, then we don't need the opinion, no. And let the new board, after the first of the fiscal year, decide what they want to do. Because you'll never get this done in time as an ordinance by the end of the month, I don't believe, and have a public hearing.
Granted, if we have to notify all, all the folks that are living beside the stream. I just, I'm hanging my hat somewhat on these, Mr. Feldman's take on this because I was adamant that we need to get a sense from an experienced planner whether we were going to be running afoul of this.
There you go. He's a planner, not a lawyer.
He said to do what we always do.
What's that?
All he said to do is do what we always do, but if you read it and, and we disagree on what we always do, then how can that opinion?
We, because we're not lawyers, I guess, or planners. My, my, my sense of this, for it being a copia to do it now was you're, you're giving, you're giving away some of the safeguards that were in place by granting this special exception. I think it's a good idea. I don't totally buy Kenny's, you know, the, they're going to be having our heads on pikes, but it's good to address issues if they're, if they're orders to, land orders, within reason, if it doesn't impact the resource too negatively, if you can, if you can make a trade-off within your, the dealings of the application. But we have to, I think, acknowledge the fact that we are stepping back from a level of protection or safeguard, or call it what you will, that we had. And I would, and I think it's an appropriate time to say to the voters we're, we're being more lenient in, in the regard of granting or supporting the notion of this special exception, but we would like to get your faith and, and understanding of the notion of, of the fact that our resources do need protection and with the notion of protecting first-order streams, we would be taking a modest step in that direction.
So we're giving them a break on one hand, but then we're taking more land, more land use away on the other hand. And if we're taking land use away, we have to notify them, especially RP stuff.
I'm, I'm not opposed to the notification, I just want to get a clarification on that. I'm just trying to advocate on behalf of protection of first-order streams because if you look on the map, I mean, Gavin and I spent a bit of time analyzing this behind Richard there, and there are many single, as what we call first-order streams, that flow directly into our great ponds. And currently, they have no protection whatsoever.
A lot of them go right through the middle of fairly small properties.
Some of them do, and some of them, if you look in that map just sometimes...
I looked at the map the other day. I took a ruler, I went from right to left, and I looked at blue lines. I didn't measure them, but I saw that there was enough that, that we would be affecting quite a bit of land that's not in resource protection now, and I understand wanting to protect it, Tom. I was with you when you first wanted it years ago. But since at this time, bringing them both in at the same time is just going to act...
Well, they would be two separate...
It's going to create a problem if we're trying to solve the problem.
I would, I would agree with Kenny's notion of separating them out into two separate one items. But I think it's an opportune time if you're... But I think it's an opportune time, if you're, if you're truly interested in protecting the resources a little better, the water resources, and they do flow, many of them do flow directly into our great ponds, and, and they're, as I've said before, the analogy of arteries and veins, these are what feed, you know, and, and maintain habitats in their proximity as they flow into the pond immediately. They're areas of spawning, and they're important little areas.
But if we're cutting slack on secondary streams, why would we then include more restrictions on primary streams?
Well, we're not cutting secondary streams.
We're, but that's what we're looking.
Seventy-five feet, we kept our seventy-five.
Yeah, if you're maintaining that minimum threshold, you're not giving ground on the streams.
It'd affect roughly one hundred and seventy-five lots, the additional stream protection. Just under two hundred, I think.
When you say that, that, I, I understand what you're saying, but if you look at the map again, many of the streams originate within undeveloped, you know, blocks of land. They don't, they don't, you know, they're not running across to the surrounding yards, they're out in the middle of the damn woods somewhere.
Well, so are the resource protection areas that we just unprotected, or made exceptions for.
Correct, that's why there's only a hundred and twenty-four landowners approximately impacted with this.
Yeah, there's only a couple thousand people in all of the town, which a hundred and twenty-four properties is.
We're making, we're making changes already, we haven't had a hundred and twenty-four people come in complaining about what we're trying to fix right now.
Yeah, I mean lawsuits doesn't take, I mean hundreds of thousands.
I mean, there's been a handful, there's been, there's been a reason for this change, and I, I don't see.
Well.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, I, if the two items are divided, you know, they're separate warrant articles, you know, let the chips fall where they may.
Would, if you do it separately, and then you get protection of the first-level streams? Oh, I don't know where to go there.
Would, would that then be included in this?
Will it affect what we've just written?
Well, if that did pass, then it wouldn't be included at this point, so you'd have a whole year where secondary, you could do something with, but primary you couldn't. Well, we haven't included them yet, and the state doesn't include them, and I'm saying, I don't. I think it's going to be more trouble than it's worth, it's going to be perceived by people, some people voting that, you know, here we are, taking more land use away. And, you know, you could get people voting against it, that aren't really looking at, other than, here the town's taking something away, and I, I don't want them to do that.
But you, you would hopefully be treating them, as Kenny suggested, as two separate warrants.
It doesn't make any difference, hey, it's left to vote on it. And here it's real simple, because it's one tiny thing, you know, first-order streams are this, they're protected, see here, yes or no?
Well, the protection of the first-order stream would be merely a change in the stream definition, it would be a two-sentence warrant.
It'd be a hundred and fifty feet that can't be developed at all.
You'd have to, you'd have to build a case for that, I'm not, I'm not, I've explained to you what my thinking is behind it.
And mine is that leave it the way it is, so that's mine.
Can we show the hands, have a show of hands in terms of who would want to at least inquire as to the notification requirement that might be necessary if we were to go forward with this? At any point in time? All right, yeah.
Obviously, let's decide if we're going to, if we want to go forward, because if we don't want to go forward, then we're not going to go get a lawyer's opinion.
Well, I don't think that the mailing would cost that much, for two hundred and eight properties, it's a hundred bucks, somebody has to bring up the.
But they're.
Aren't they registered?
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure if they are, but even so, if the selectmen want that by the twenty-nine, it's not physically possible for me to do that. It really isn't.
Because there has to be a public hearing.
We can still keep working on it, even if it's not for this year. I mean, but we're doing it now, we might as well continue with it. I think protecting the first-order streams is a good idea, they're on the map, they're big enough that they got on the map, there's so many streams out there that aren't on the map, and I tell you, they, they run year-round. And you go to one of those streams, there's one right across my house, it goes Cross Pack Road, you go down there, and I wouldn't build my house seventy-five feet from it. You know, it's all.
And this wouldn't even touch it, because it's not on the map, so there's going to be streams that aren't on the map.
Well, there's always streams that are on the map, we're just going to cover up the ones that are, you know? Those are the biggest ones that I can identify. I think it's a good idea, I don't think the notification would really be, in terms of the cost, would really slow us down, and if it's going to take longer than the amount of time we have now, then so be it, so we might as well go ahead and.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to be in a position of people being able to say, tell.
Right, yeah.
They don't get the paper, they don't.
I don't think anybody's against the mailing, we just had one, someone's opinion was that we didn't need a mailing, so we turned it into a fair amount of discussion, but I don't think the mailing would hurt in any way, it's a good idea.
Well, are we talking about presenting it at a public hearing next week?
No.
Not this issue, no.
I don't know that we've, have we decided yet that we want to even proceed with protecting the first-order streams? Or do you want to still think about it and talk about it next time, or some other time? Under it, at home?
If you, if you wouldn't mind, we'll, we'll, Gavin and I will do some more homework on this map that we started, a bit of census-taking of how many first-order streams were there, and what they impacted in terms of flowing into our, means great ponds or whatever, and we'll, we'll try to gather some, some data for you to, you know, refine our thinking, hopefully, and make a case for this.
Super, you've still got stormwater ordinance things.
Right.
We've gone ahead in our office and used the existing ordinance and implementing that, requiring documentation now for stormwater management. We gave up waiting for you, you know, offense.
Thank you. Well, most of our permits, it's just the permitted stuff that we really have to clarify, because everything else is conditional.
Does Mitch McConnell?
I don't know Mitch McConnell.
Ron State.
I don't.
What else is on the?
So just to clarify, the stream protection, are we thinking that's, we're not dealing with that this year?
Correct.
Yeah, not, not for June anymore.
Yeah, that's just what I'm just clarifying.
But we're solid with what we're doing with this, special exceptions change, correct?
We should.
Play it out of the shoreline zone.
Outside the shoreline, don't.
We should put in a requisition for some cots.
Cots?
Cots.
Nah, see, what do you have it, going over your map, we're going to have the cots. I'm sure there's mattresses in the, the bug out room back there.
From the, well, gross permit case.
Yeah, there you go.
Weeks they were here.
So that's it, anything else? Anybody? Connect cable, then.